All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Study Session, Joint Meeting with the Chairs of all the Boards, Committees, and Commissions. It should be a fascinating conversation. I don't really have an agenda, so I'm assuming Kelly's just gonna take it from here.
I think that's the plan, is for me to take it from here, but I do want to make sure that I don't talk too much, because it's really supposed to be a conversation between all of you and council. So if I start going too far into the weeds, somebody else will stop it. I also wanna keep to time, because we, a lot of folks have constraints where they have to actually leave at 6:15. We have a Planning Commission meeting that's not in this building, so we are gonna be kind of holding tight to that. With that in mind, I've tried to keep it pretty pared down as that's opening. How do I start this slide? I'm only planning to cover kind of three big things with you all. We may not get to all of them due to time. The first one is this project list, which I'll give you a little background on in a minute, about why it's here and what we hope to get from it. The second one is just we're heading into 2019, so it's a chance to check in and talk about sort of some big-picture items in terms of council and goals and all that good stuff. And then the last item is related to diversity inclusion in membership. As we have membership spots opening up, it's something that we're working on over on the staff side that I just wanna check in with you all about and see if you can partner heading into the new year on that topic as well. So first, why do we have this list? And why did we ask you to look at it? So we had a great conversation with council about two months ago, I would say, and just really presented the breadth of all the boards and commissions and task forces that are currently doing awesome work all across the city. And the purpose of doing that is, we have quite a few. We have quite a few different groups doing work. Some of them didn't exist when the original Board or Commission was formed, and so there were some areas of overlap we were starting to see. And council asked us, they said, "But you know, you know, who's the primary Board or Commission responsible for your area on a project, right?" And we go, "We're not quite sure, actually." So they said, "Well, how about we tackle that? That seems like the thing we should talk about. Can you go make us a list of everything that you're working on and tell us who you believe is the primary Board or Commission or task force associated with that project?" And so that's what we did. We tried to go gather all our active ones. What you see is not a full list of everyone we know cares about that project or issue. We know it's much, much bigger than that. We were trying to say, "This is the group we think we'd go to primarily, and this is where we'd invite other people to attend." And so in some places with capital projects, I have included an NDA as well, just because the capital construction impacts of that specific project is such, where we really felt like we needed to list both the kind of the Issue Committee and the NDA as well. So I think we're really just gonna talk about that really as the main thing we wanna get through with you all today. I put it in front of you. I think the only other thing you need to know before we get into too much detail is that projects themselves, they have a life cycle to them. And the level of engagement or input or change that you can have on a project does change based on where we are in the project life cycle. At the beginning, at the kind of, at the planning stage, that blue chunk, you have a lot to say. I mean, you can really shape it in pretty significant and major ways, and a lot of the work that you all are doing and your boards and commissions is doing just that. Then we're going into the budget process, another pretty huge opportunity to shape the way that things look, because you're assigning the dollars to those. That's when we're particularly with capital projects, adjusting the scope quite a bit. Once we go into implementation, once those policy objectives has been set, the budget has been set, and we're implementing it, there's not as many ways to push and change it as drastically, but we still have a notification role that we really need to be playing. So we might be pushing more information out, but not asking, "Hey, do you wanna change X or Y?" And then we come back to, I think, again, a more engaging place, which is when we're evaluating what we did, right? Did we, how'd it work, right? And that's when you can say, "That was bad." We'd like to do a planning process and try that again. Or, "That was great," you know? And so you start that cycle again. So we've tried to, to, on this sheet, not just talk to you about the project itself, but also give you some context for where it is in this cycle. It may not be perfect, but that's what's attempting to do, is show you that, so that you can get a better sense of what, when we're putting your Board or Commission next to you, what level of engagement we're hoping to get at that time. So is there anything else you wanna add?
On the sheet, you'll notice that there are four columns. So the first column is what we've been calling it. It's not a formal name, so apologies if it doesn't come across exactly the way you know it. The primary city department is just so that you know, if you are working on this project or if you're interested in this project, contact the head of that department, and I can get you their names if you're curious. We put in here CIP, Policy or Event Process, because we wanted you to understand also that CIP processes, once they're through the planning process, are a little bit different, because the construction phase is longer, there's more money attached to these, and so we just, we think about them a little differently. We wanted you to know that. And then, then we have the assignments where we think our primary is, to see if we got it right. So that was how we came up with the list.
With that, I kinda gotta stop, because it's a long list, and I'm not gonna read the whole list. I think you all got it in advance, and I just wanted to open it up to the group to talk about your impressions and what did we get right? What are we missing? Were you surprised by anything? And then, and really, again, it's for you and the council, because the council's relying on you all to help inform them, so that's why we're here.
When you say CIP on here, does that mean it's Active CIP as opposed to all that old stuff that we're really doing?
It is CIP in that it's gonna be construction. And so it's just, it's a hardscape that's going to be created. It's not just an idea or a concept that we're gonna be implementing. And so we wanted you to know that there's a big budget process with that. It'll come through in that portion of the budget process to an extent. So that's why we differentiated this originally. Originally, we thought there were two different project cycles, life cycles, when we were designing this. We thought we would explain the difference between CIP and policy. What we discovered is the scoping for all of them is exactly the same. The scoping is where you have your primary ability to create something new, and that includes you bringing ideas forward all the way through to us having council adopt those ideas into policy for future action.
And I guess I also should've said, I invite council for you all to provide any additional context or background that I didn't give that's really necessary for this conversation, if I captured that well enough, so.
So did we miss anything on the list?
I have a question for you, actually, about the list, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So down on the very bottom in engineering, we've got, you know, all the different projects, you know, in sort of various different, some of them are safe projects and some of them aren't. I'm wondering if the difference between, you know, so if PSAC is not involved or not considered a primary on an engineering, what is the significance there? Is it, or is there a significance? I'm one, you know, it seems to me like most of these improvement projects would be touched by PSAC, but what I'm understanding, not that PSAC wouldn't touch it, it's just that the NDA would be considered primary?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think also, I will tell you, and Ann gave this to me three times to check, like 42nd is a safe project. I should have PSAC and the NDA on there to match the other safe projects.
Okay.
But that's what I, that was when I was filtering them. If it had been a safe identified project or was in a safe bundle, then PSAC was my primary, but the NDA was also primary in terms of neighborhood impact.
Right.
Because as we're moving into the next phase, we have to engage with them at a higher level.
Okay.
So it would've been an oversight more than a...
What remains to be done on 42nd?
We have the whole, it's not paving, it's the safe project, and I don't have the limits in my brain right now, but it's pretty extensive project.
Yeah, the only thing that was done on 42nd were the curbs that were touched by the SSMP, right? So it actually wasn't safe at all yet.
Yeah, I have sidewalk water work, I have quite a bit. I can send you the...
But only the corners? There was no actual connection. Safe is the connection. I mean, we had to do some curbs, that was why Safe, part of the reason why Safe was created, was because money was getting taken out of SSMP, right?
Yeah, it's got, I have a, I have a project on 42nd that has Safe, SSMP, and water work all combined. Actually, I think maybe the SSMP part is only patch paving, but I can get you the full scope. But it's actually a fairly significant, we're working through the charter on it right now.
Forty Second's also a long street.
Yeah.
So my guess is it's not the portion between Harrison and Railroad. I'm guessing it's actually the portion between Johnson Creek, yeah, right, like I think it actually...
It might go all the way to Johnson Creek.
Yeah.
Oh.
I think it's actually...
Well, no, I know the street does. I mean, the project, it might...
Yeah. I think it's a different chunk of the street. So you and I are thinking of the one by my house.
Yeah.
I don't think that's actually the one we're doing.
Not doing that, no.
Yes. We're not tearing out that street, ever.
You're right, actually, they have, you're right. That part doesn't have sidewalks toward Johnson Creek.
A lot of it doesn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Question on the trees. Does the county talk to us when they're thinking about removing lots of trees that are, right? I'm not quite sure if they're in the Milwaukee boundaries or not, right there at the end of the industrial park where the Lake Road off Ram Sire, Lake Road and 224 intersection, Hobart, Breakside, there's a real wide planting strip in there?
It was actually the on-ramp section, because I passed by it this week, and I had not received a phone call. I wasn't sure if that was the county or if that was ODOT.
That would be ODOT, not the county.
Yeah.
Then they don't bother, I mean, we're sitting there going to, we want to plant trees, spend money to plant trees to increase our canopy, and they're taking out healthy trees that are, it's like counterproductive.
Well, and a, part of that is the work that the Tree Board's been working on for the last year, because the tree code really has been primarily focused in the past on city-owned properties, and so that actually is something they're looking at addressing through this other process. And correct me if I'm wrong, Andy.
No, that sounds great.
Okay, thanks.
We do wanna be able to, you know, work with trees across the city on all properties.
Yeah, I didn't see any reason for them to be removed.
They looked very healthy.
They were healthy, they were off the road, they weren't repeating anything. Black 'em down.
Do you know what kind of trees?
Mostly a laurel-type tree, but I mean, it's better than the stumps that are there now.
Well, I'm really pleased to see the list, and when I was looking at it, I looked at it from a, I guess, a different viewpoint. I wasn't just looking at the primary, I was looking at what other boards should be involved with each project. So I started immediately writing down next to them, all the other boards that should be next to them. I noticed art and trees should be on a lot of these projects. That, that's the first thing I noticed. As far as parks go, I'm like, "Well, we need these guys, and we need them to do," you know, so it should be another check.
So one of the things that came up during this process for us is that we were being asked to go to multiple boards on the same thing for different issues, instead of having everyone going to a single board and having a discussion. So the direction that we heard from council, and I'm giving them a chance to change that if they feel they need to, is that we go to one board as our primary. We invite art, we invite PARB, or we invite the Tree Board to those meetings, and if they would like to send a representative to those meetings to understand what the project is, where it's at, we can notice those boards, but we are not planning on going to a multitude of board meetings across one project. We just don't have the staffing with the sheer volume of projects that we have on the list.
Recognizing that there are many boards and committees and commissions that are interested in the same project, and so it's much more efficient and a better use of time to have everybody come to one meeting.
Plus, you tend to get, this board says, "We should do this," right? This other board says, "We should do that," and they're at odds with each other. So it's better if everybody's sitting in the same room, having that conversation, and then, then staff has some kind of marching orders that they can actually bring back to us.
Well, and the, and the boards can disagree in that setting. Really, what the boards are doing is they're making a recommendation to council before we take a vote. Most of these are decisions that council will hear, and so we're trying to coalesce what the concerns were from the community, so that they have that information in advance of the meeting. So it's not that you have to agree between the two boards either, that's not what we're saying, but we do need everybody in a room hearing each other, so that we're able to give that information to council in a concise way.
I would just add, I think that sounds like it would be just useful to have one board kind of have ownership of something, too, and kind of be able to see that from beginning to end, so that makes sense.
Well, and part of our hope here, too, is, and it's not on this list yet, because you guys haven't actually presented, you're coming before the council very, I think, next week on the tree program, but as an example, the DLC, Lauren and I went out and we were having breakfast, talking about a different project, and we actually started talking about the Heritage Tree Ordinance. And she said, "I feel like we really need to get on this, it's on the list, I need to get to this," and I said, "I think the Tree Board's doing that." So part of this, too, is if I now know to notice, Lauren, that you guys are the primary, then it gives her a chance, without having to take overtime on a meeting, to actually come to your meeting and say, "Yeah, we're in agreement, we think this is really important."
So I have a question on the list. To me, CIP means we're spending money, basically. That's, that's the bottom line. Otherwise, it's just decisions, it's plans, it's things that are written in paper, or not these days. So, an example that is listed as policy, but, and I was looking for another one, but if we're going to actually do it, it's gonna need capital, is the increase of the tree canopy from 26% to 40%.
So the way I've been looking at this, and I'm open to that, this really was a staffing way of thinking of this, we've been thinking of CIP as construction, not just money being spent. So is there an infrastructure, a human-made infrastructure component to what we're doing that we are going to be processing the creation of? The tree planting is a program. It will be a program more than even a policy. It will be something we implement over time, and it will be a tree planting based on income we get and, and resources we receive from however you guys construct that program. So I wouldn't be too wed to the money and how I categories them as policy versus CIP. The council can always define these in any way that you guys want to. This was staff's way of trying to explain whether or not Kelly has to be at the table in large part, like, is this a construction project where we're going to have physical infrastructure being developed?
Well, and we haven't, I mean, not, we just, I mean, the reason, the way I read it is that it's at the, it's at the policy stage, because we haven't actually...
Right.
We haven't talked about it in terms of like, how would, how, what would that look like? It wouldn't become a capital improvement project if we called it that eventually, until we all decided.
Right. Well, that's what I figured, too, in that, that most of the things on here are actually going through a process, so it would be, you know, whatever it is right now, but three months from now, it might be a CIP project, or, you know, it might be something else. So, and, and some of them obviously will come off, too, as that project complete, which Top Park is a good example. You know, it should come off fairly soon, so, you know, it doesn't show up. But if you start planning on another park, then you're in the policy stage, and then you're in the CIP stage, you know, whatever. I mean, right? I mean, that's kind of what I figured, that was a living document, in a way.
Yeah, and it's messy right now, and I can go back and clean it up, because under that example, Milwaukee Bay Park would be listed as policy. We're still in the design, we haven't hit the construction phase. But there has been an intentionality, where I feel like I've received direction that we're gonna build it. Now, whether or not we do that, whether or not we go down that path, we're still in discussions about, but that's sort of why we named it as CIP. I actually am fine deleting that whole column. It really was just a way for us, as we were trying to get our brains around what the process looks like and where we are.
And I think we got there towards the end, but what I was trying to get, more than just budget or not, was this, just to give you a sense of, if I'm asking you to be engaged, should you be expecting to get notices from me that your street's getting torn up? Or you, should you be asking, should you be expecting me to invite you to like a brainstorming exercise where we're visioning? And, you know, that was more what I was trying to get at in that column, so we could rework it. Yeah.
I think it's helpful, and, and, you know, maybe, I mean, if it's a little confusing, you know, maybe there are better labels to use, but I think it's helpful to have a sense of where projects are, where...
Well, and we can even take this list and that chart, and we can input at which point's...
Doesn't it kind of match the chart? I mean, it's the top, policy, and the bottom half, CIP, I mean, more or less.
We're trying to make the best...
Yeah, kind of what they relate to, yeah.
One of the things that we haven't always been great at is that coming back evaluation at the end. Did this work? Did we hit our goals? And now that we've been in process with me here two years, we actually are starting to see things that I started that are starting to be completed, which allows me then to create this evaluation process. So you'll see more of that than you've seen in the past. Did this work? Is this a functioning process? Did it accomplish the goals that we set out for? And that's, we do that internally to an extent. We've been trying to get better about not an accusatory, "That didn't work," more of a, "What didn't work? How do we get better? How do we get stronger and more elastic as we're creating these other projects?"
So how, I mean, I think the point was important, one that Kelly made, that, you know, you're, anybody, any board or any individual's best opportunity for input is at that planning stage. So how do we make sure that, that enough boards, that, that everybody knows what's going on? I mean, you've done a list here, but in six months, there'll be new things.
Right.
So how do we, moving forward...
No, we're only here. Just kidding, totally kidding. It's a great question, and we actually can create something like this, where we're making this assumption. I have no problem having an ongoing list like this, where if we think it's going to have an engagement relationship with the community, that we can make sure it's in a form like this and just take direct feedback if people are in disagreement. It might also be really useful for us to do this once a year. Did we get this right as a team? Because one of the things that we've also heard is, if we're not all in the same room, if we're not all talking about these things together, then I may like something, I may dislike something, and nobody ever really knows that there's a consternation there. I like the idea of having a place where we talk about this.
I guess I'll just add, I think as a city, we are moving more towards have a more tiering system, a little bit more in terms of engagement itself, too. Planning processes by their nature tend to be at a very high level of engagement is required, because they touch, a lot of them touch the whole city, right? And so when you flip that switch, and you're now working on a comp plan that's 30 years long and touches the whole city, you're in a different level of engagement as required, which, again, this is not, this is not the entirety of my engagement strategy, right? So if, if I only went here, and then I just pretended like I had everything covered, and we never talked to anybody else on some of this stuff, our projects would blow up. This is really for the purposes of BCC assigning the primary role. It doesn't mean that by going to that one place, I've sufficiently done all public engagement. Does that make any sense? I mean, and so I think we were working through that and need to be making it more clear, but you're exactly right, that a planning process, given how high the impact can be respective to your engagement, and the high cross-section of people that it can touch at any given time, usually pushes it more into the higher level of engagement category, in my perspective.
Well, I mean, not everything is, you know, the comp plan, and not everything is so big, but I guess, yeah, that, I mean, like, I think the, the Community Development Report is a nice document that I wish more people in the city saw, and this goes beyond community development, there's lots of things in here beyond what that covers, but it's sort of that kind of, what, what can be a trigger that, that somebody, you know, who's interested can look at and go, "Oh, the city's kicking this off, and our, my board isn't the primary, but we might be interested in that," or, "Or I might personally be interested in that."
We don't have the perfect answer, but I am, I have an employee who's trying to create a hierarchy for us to function in. So if this is, if this is going to be hitting multiple neighborhoods, if this is something where this is going to impact people's personal property, if this is some, whatever those triggers are, that it automatically heightens it, and staff knows that it has to heighten it, because right now, there's some lack of clarity, if you cross department to department, of what, what the expectations of the city are on each project. If you're a planner, as Kelly was saying, you, you have done this, you have been trained from the time you enter college, that these are the expectations around how you go through a planning process, and you know those expectations like the back of your hand. If you're a, let's see, if you're, I'll call them library, if you're in the library, you're not used to having that kind of engagement, because we're not typically needing that kind of engagement, but this project is above and beyond what the library usually does, I need something that all the directors have that says, "Oh, this is more. This takes it up to a level." So we're looking at that this spring. We're gonna know more come late spring, early summer, but we're trying to figure out, how do we create the triggers you're talking about to make sure that the boards and commissions know, when there's something that really is an engagement opportunity, who we think we're going to, so that they can weigh in on that.
So I have a capacity question, in that this sounds like a lot of engagement in a fairly complex system. And any system is a good system, better than no system, but what is staffing capacity for this? Is there someone whose primary responsibility it will be to see whether or not this wonderful system that you're putting energy into developing plays out?
I deeply appreciate you right now. We don't have somebody assigned to this, and we don't have, this is us trying to, this is us trying to meet an expectation in the community that is different than most communities. We expect a lot of engagement here in Milwaukee. It's something that defines us, and I think it's something that's really important. But it is not something that we've invested a ton of money in. So right now, you're looking at the team who's doing this. I am managing this all the time. For council members who have seen my whiteboard, it's kind of a legend, because I do have, constantly, I'm thinking about how many projects we have, who's doing them, who's assigned to them, and where are we at capacity? And we're hitting capacity in some of those departments. We have really big audacious goals, they're awesome goals, they are taking a lot of our time for our staff, so I'm constantly trying to balance the staffing, just to make sure that we're able to still meet the needs of the city. But shared answer is no. So that's why I'm saying, we're probably looking at this, I can make sure, you know, once a year, we have this meeting, just to do a check-in, and I will try every six months or so to say, "This is what we think is new on this list, and this is where we think it's going." Projects actually aren't going to come up so fast that, that I'm gonna have this question all that often. PARB is Parks. If there's a Parks question, even if it's not on this list, I'm probably going to Parks. It really is where are there conflicts, and I don't think most of these are conflicts.
I would say, too, if, if we're identifying primaries on a project, then, and that Board or Commission is, is kind of the go-to board, maybe they should also be looking at what other input they need from other boards and commissions and involve them in the process right from the beginning, so that they're aware...
That'd be great.
That's something citizens could potentially take on.
I'd love that.
And that way, maybe things don't slip through.
Absolutely, and I think part of it for us is, if we have both sides looking at it, if we're both trying to make sure we're capturing things, and this is not my work plan, just so everybody knows, this is a fourth of what we're, what we do. I mean, a lot of these things are internal. We're looking at changing the servers for the city. I have a lot of staff who have to be involved in changing out the servers for the city. That's not something that we need to do in, in an open environment like this. I'm trying to be really critical about making sure that we're clear, that we're making sure that the things that should be seen are being seen, and that's, that's my responsibility, I think. And I think it's council's, too. Council sees a lot of these projects at their inception. I think there's an opportunity for council to say, "Hey, we really want some, we wanna step up engagement around this. We wanna make sure we're hearing from this board. Can they be the primary?" I mean, there's a lot of interactions in this that could help.
Thank you, that's a great suggestion.
It was. And I think it, I would encourage that to happen.
I have input on one general project, that's the Earth and Arbor Day event, and the Tree Board is supposed to be in charge of Arbor Day, and in years past, it really has been a PARB thing, but maybe this coming year, Arbor Day may stand up on its own a little bit more than in years past, and that would be something that the Tree Board would really be the primary for, and not PARB.
Are you comfortable with that, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. No, we could...
We can, I mean, technically, Earth Day and Arbor Day should really be separate.
Yes.
Yes. So, but if, if we're doing them on the same day, maybe one group could help more with the Earth Day part, and one day could help more with the Arbor Day part.
So I'm gonna go, I, I think that's definitely a possibility. I'm gonna go back to what Kathy said earlier, so, thank you, counselor. We are limited on how many events we can do. I ran into a brick wall this year. I'm gonna be talking about that several times with council over the coming months, which which is our events are getting bigger. They're becoming more intense. They're becoming more unique. They're becoming big. And when they become big, they actually require a lot more staffing. And they require a lot more energy to go towards them. And so my only caution is when we talk about separating events into two separated events, that's actually no one staff person doing two events instead of trying to do one event. And that actually is a staff capacity issue. What I can do is I can say, yes, you can have a say on one side of it, and yes, you can have a say on the other side of it. One of the things I have heard is that there was some overlap. Last year even, about where that line was. And so that may need to be that we all get in a room and we say, where's the line?
I'll just add, I put this on here. So I have PARB listed, assuming it's a joint event. And the reason why is because in my experience so far, a lot of it has centered around parks, or at least last year, it was in a park. And so it's just a, it's a really nice home and the history of PARB with Earth Day events. So as long as it's together, I have them. I know there's conversations going on if they split. If we, you know, Jason's been working on that with you guys, if they split, I think that makes sense. My only caution is if you're still planning a tree in a park, you guys.
Have to work it out.
We don't have to decide right now whether it's joint or split or anything like that, just.
But I think it's a highlight that we have an overlap. So I'd like to make sure that that overlap continues with staffing. And if council ends up having an opinion, they're welcome to contact me on that.
Well, this was something that was on my list of things to talk about, too. We've always combined them in the past. And it really doesn't make sense for Arbor Day to be in the spring. Arbor Day is about planting trees. And if, and we hand out a whole bunch of free trees. And we're handing them out just when things are gonna get dry. It makes a whole lot more sense in the state of Oregon, at least still, to be having Arbor Day in November, or December, or January, or something where it's gonna have, you know, several months of theoretical rain.
I totally hear you, and I think you're right. It does come down to whether or not you have the staffing capacity to do two events separated over the course of the year. And that is something that when we bring that work plan before you guys to talk about just the size and breadth of these events and what they're becoming, we're gonna need to talk about. Because we do not, right now, have sufficient resources to be able to staff these, or not just staff them, but in some cases, police them at the levels that we need to. We, Solstice is a great event and a great example. It grew this last year substantially. We had safety concerns raised about whether or not we needed for crossings to have safer crossings across 90-90. And those adds costs. We also have new staffing coming into, into City Hall that is displacing our storage area for events. We need to have a discussion around how we're going to provide for that, that component of this asset. So those are all things that, yes, we need to keep talking about. But the reason, I think, why we've done them together is literally capacity. So if we wanna add, we can. But I'd actually like to remove, we need to keep going on the list. So for tonight, I'd like to make this a future council conversation that we have. Are there other things that you had on your list, Mayor, that you wanted to talk about?
No.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other things from other people on the list component of this that we wanna talk about?
What about something that's not on the list?
Sure.
What about Sunday Parkways?
It is actually, it's our Open Streets. It's the fourth one down on the red.
Okay, okay, okay.
Should actually be Carefree Sunday.
It's Carefree Sundays, I didn't correct the title on it. And we actually created a task force for that. So that one actually has a segregated group of people right now that are working on it, who are, who volunteered to participate in that.
Okay. I did not know, that's what I was like, where is?
No, thank you, I appreciate it. Like I said, some of the names are not right on this, so I apologize for that.
And Jason loves for people to be on that task.
I was gonna say. I think Jason will have open, future openings, right? Yes.
I know, I know that the funding thing was the big issue to start with, so I didn't know where we, if there was a group working on it. So I'm glad there's one that started.
Yeah, and it's funded for, so there's a 2019 event. So we're funded, it's gonna happen. We've gotta find a way to make it self-sustaining. And we have a lot of work to do, because it's the first time it's gonna happen without Portland's help. But it's on there, it's real. And there's a group of folks, yeah, to help with that, so.
More in there, here.
Anything else?
I think this is an excellent public involvement tool. It should lead to more efficient public policy deliberations, given the amount of time the council has to review all this stuff. To the extent we get people talking together at meetings at the same time, it's gonna be beneficial to all of us.
Then we're gonna keep going on the agenda.
Okay, if you think of something later, let me know. Okay, why is it doing that? Okay, big picture. So you all, last year, you come in once a year and you present your work plans to council and your goals. So these are just a couple of questions that you don't, you can answer one or both, or whichever ones you feel like. But the, how did it go when you were creating your work plans last year? What do you, in terms of aligning to the council parties, you know, they set big three goals every year. How do you feel like that was shared with you? Do you need us to share that more directly with you? And then what do you, do you have any thoughts or suggestions on how we can help align those, the council goal-setting process with your work-planning process heading into 2019? And does that make any sense?
I wrote it if it doesn't. Not Kelly. So the question, I'll add a little clarity. We have three big goals, housing, climate, and the park. I have heard, I've gone to multiple meetings, I've heard all of you talk about them. So the Planning Commission, I go to a Planning Commission meeting, and you're talking about, you know, the housing component, or you're talking about the green component, or you're talking about whatever those are. DLC, same discussion. I go to meetings, I overhear things, and it sounds like you were able to integrate pretty well into what those goals were. And it feels like we got the message out, that council got the message out, that there was a good dialogue about what those were and why. We wanna make sure that we're reading that right. Because if we didn't give you that information in a good way, we're about to do it again. We'd like to do it correctly. And we'd like to make sure that we're helping you align to their goals. And then we also wanna make sure that we're setting up a check-in process with council that is giving you any questions or clarity that you need around their goals so that you're able to help them achieve them, I think is what my intention was with this.
I think with the arts, we did feel that we were engaged with and were able to apply our skillset to the council's goals. I think that we weren't entirely clear what we could engage with on our own that would still align with what council wanted. I think more dialogue might have been needed over this last year, but it was a year of many transitions. The year prior to that, didn't feel that there was much communication. So it was an improvement, but it can improve further, for sure.
So one of the things I'd like to do is once council's through their goal-setting, and we've really, it won't just be one-day thing. This is gonna have to, we have to start getting used to talking about it and figuring out what we mean when we define things. And that takes a little bit of time. So I would say probably in February, we'll work on developing something that we can get out to all the boards that says, this is what the council goals are. These are what types of, this is the way we see different boards engaging in these. But you're welcome to your own intention on that. If you see it, they are simply examples. They're just ways of me trying to help you think through how you can connect into helping them accomplish those goals. They are not direction. So please know that in advance when we create that. It's just, here's some ideas, take them or leave them.
If I may. Generally, we do our strategic planning meeting in February. Is that the best time when it's not been articulated what the goals for the year is?
Yeah, we can get you these by February 1st. I can, I have no concerns about developing a piece that we get out to all of you.
Thank you.
I mean, I think it's important, though, that we not lose sight of the fact that the council goals are not everything the council does. So, for example, the SAFE program and PSX were, is a very important part of what the city's doing, but it didn't actually happen to be one of the three council goals. So, I mean, there will be years where various boards don't really fit to a council goal. That doesn't mean they don't have anything to do, or they, you know, and, yeah. So I mean, I think it's important to, you know, keep in mind that what they work on is still valued, even if it's not reflected.
Absolutely. I would say, right now, for my personal workload, 50% of my time is dedicated to things that were prior council's goals that we are now in an implementation phase of. So SAFE, the library, I can't think of all of them right now. But a large portion of my workload is, we got this to the implementation stage. And once it hit that implementation stage, council doesn't really talk about it as much. But staff is very much shown the doing of that. And there are still opportunities for those interactions during that phase. There's budgeting conversations that I have to have about the library, right? So we're still in those, they were prior goals, but they didn't go away. They didn't stop being important. They just, we got to them to the point where implementation was possible without a lot of policy work. So yes, I agree. There's, there, that's also part of why I, when we color-coded this sheet, we tried to show how they aligned with council goals on the front, but it didn't change all the things on the back that really are the priorities that have come up for years.
I'm wondering about one thing that, the scheduling of work plans for the committees and the boards. I think for, at least for the DLC, it typically occurs in the fourth quarter. And then you're saying that council provides goals in the first quarter of the year.
Yeah, so what happens is a new council gets seated, and they get to have say, right? They get to start directing where we're going. So as soon as the new council is seated, what we're trying to do is within two weeks of the new council being seated, that we're starting this dialogue to make sure that we're still in alignment with where the new council wants to be going.
I think, I mean, you're raising an issue, like, how can I do my goals if I don't have yours yet? And if it's missed time?
I'm almost wondering if it should be the reverse, because...
The reason why I can't give you a satisfactory answer is because it, we wanna make sure each, everyone has enough time at council to speak. And we can't put you all in the same quarter, otherwise, we couldn't schedule it properly. So I think that's where Council made his point, I think is well-taken. There's not, a lot of your work plan is gonna be somewhat independent of these three priorities. But it does really help, I find, to just make sure, does everyone know what they are? You know, I mean, even cross-departmentally, sometimes you get in your own silo. And I think a lot about building sidewalks, right? But, you know, almost thinking a lot about housing. And Peter's thinking a lot about trees. And it's just nice for us all to make sure we're recognizing these high-priority things that come and overlap with each other. I don't know that it'll change too much about where DLC wants to be and what the specific items of your workload are. But you should have enough information when we provide it in order to inform your goal-setting so that you'll know what the high-level priorities are. I think you'll be okay. I can't make it all snap exactly, perfectly, just due to time.
I'm just wondering if it would be, it might just be a path into the weeds, but I'm wondering if it would be helpful when you are reaching out to the boards with council goals in February, or by February 1st, to also make some brief mention of, by the way, these are the other things that are still very active within the city. Because that may spur some sort of thinking about opportunities to engage that have been lost, just in the mix, because it's busy.
Is there anyone, I did, this is my, I'm in New Year's mode, I'm making resolutions, I'm doing goal-setting. So I put this in here, it was just a conversation.
She does this in her family, just so everybody's aware.
If it's not, if you have more to share on this one, I just wanna make sure that y'all have, you're busy people. Council's busy, you're busy. And that the time you spend together when you check in is what you need it to be. So if you feel like you've got what you need on the goals, I'm gonna move on. Okay. All right, last one. And this is something, I'm starting a conversation with you all. I don't know exactly where I'm gonna take it just yet, but I wanna put it on your radar screen because it's a priority on the staff side heading into 2019. So this is, I'm not gonna read it to you, but it is the number-one goal underneath people, which is the number-one goal in our vision is that we wanna be inclusive, community of diverse people from a variety of backgrounds. You can read it yourself from there. You all are this amazing, all the boards and commissions are this amazing opportunity that we have to engage at such a deep level on things that everyone cares about. And you're great. And we get amazing applications from everywhere to populate these seats. And I think we have wonderful representation. I have asked the question about how are we thinking about the diversity of our membership on those boards heading into 2019? Just honestly, I'm asking the question. If this is where we wanna get to, and we wanna have, we wanna have our boards and commissions look and feel and represent people, a broad, broad cross-section of people who live in Milwaukee, are we getting there or not? I have no data to show you about where we are right now. I just wanna start the conversation. And I can't get there very far without council and all of you thinking about it with me. So that's all this is. If you have any thoughts to share tonight about where you'd like to go, I'd love to hear them. I think we have a lot of work to do on the staff side, just for diversity and inclusion in general that we're gonna be thinking through. But this is me starting that conversation with you all and just wanting to hear what your thoughts are.
And I have not talked to council about this, but usually, the city manager does not get her own goal. I'm kinda making my own for what our staff is. We need to have discussions around this. We need to make sure that we are a representative body and that we are engaging with our population, all of it. And so I've asked Kelly, I've been having discussions with staff to try and figure out how we do this. I'm probably gonna be coming back for a budget adjustment at some point in the next six months. That's not huge, but that helps us do this internally, with our staff in particular. But it's more than just my staff. This really is about each of you are engaging with populations that need to be engaged with. And we know, we know, that the best way to engage with populations is to have them on the board. Number one is to have representation show up. So we need to represent. How do we do that? And we need you thinking about it, because we don't know everybody. Is that fair?
Yeah.
I have something I've been thinking about that kinda dovetails with this. The Climate Action Plan, we talked a lot about trying to provide jobs in the city, trying to promote people working in the city so they can walk to work and not have to drive out of town to get jobs. And also, we make a great deal out of our volunteers. We show our appreciation for our volunteers. But I've noticed four times within the past two years where job openings occurred in Milwaukee. The first one, my wife applied for, and she didn't get interviewed. The second one, I applied for, happened this summer, and I did get interviewed, but I didn't get the job. That's, whatever. Then another came up, and I've been out of work for a while. And I applied for that one, I didn't get an interview. And someone I talked to on the street said the same thing. I thinking, my thinking is, is you have people who volunteer for the city that have shown a commitment to the city. They're working basically as unpaid interns. So the least we can do, if someone who is a volunteer for the city applies for a job and meets the requirements as stated by the city, an interview should be the minimum that that person gets.
So I do not have my HR director here with me tonight. And there are processes that I am legally bound to. And that typically is, I have thresholds where we take an entire section of individuals who qualify based on certain criteria. And we've actually been hiring a number of people who are city residents since I have been here. So I, I do want you to know that we have actually recently been hiring individuals. But I, otherwise, if I get into this any further, may get in trouble with HR. So I need to have a discussion with them. If you'd like to have a discussion with me offline, I'm happy to have that discussion.
We do, that'd be great. Thank you.
Of the diversity information that is part of the application for any opening position, how much of that data is stored or is reviewed, or?
You mean on the HR side, or you mean on the committee assignment side?
Committee assignment.
Right now, I'm not, I don't believe we're tracking it at all. I mean, I, that's, I'm very, I'm studying.
I don't think there's even a question on the application.
We talked about that for the last, one of the last.
What other application have I filled out?
But we got in trouble, so we tried. I remember when we were doing the visioning, we were very specific. We want to have people that represent these different minorities in this visioning process. And we were told, it is literally illegal for you to ask that question.
I remember that.
Don't our surveys ask, I'm like remembering being asked.
Yeah, so it's optional, you can ask optional information. What you can't do is you cannot require it as a part of the application, and you cannot use it as a basis for a hire. So there's a bunch of stuff that goes into that. Again, this is gonna go back to my HR director not being here and me getting in trouble. So, but I do think that it's important. And what I also know is you are all, most of you are residents of Milwaukee. Most of you have neighbors and friends. You know people who are ready to come and work with us and who are excited about a possibility to volunteer. If we can be helpful in that, please let us know. If, as we go into this diversity question, one of the things, one of the commitments I've made to some, one individual that I've talked to about this, who is a resident in Milwaukee, is that I won't do it trite. We're not doing this as window dressing. We're doing this to authentically try and move the needle and doing it within the law. So I need to figure some of that out. It's part of why it would take me some money. I'm not an expert in this, but I am passionate about it. And I wanna make sure that we're bringing in the right people who do know how to do this correctly so that we're being respectful as we go through the process. The boards and commissions, think about it. If you think of other things, if you wanna drop me a line after this and say, hey, here's an idea for how you might be able to change the application, or how you could think about this differently, or are you reaching out to these groups with your postings, or whatever that is, I'm in. Please let me know. That is the type of thing I'm looking for. We're not gonna be perfect at this. We are going to, I am going to try and be better at this.
I mean, there is a... I mean, there is a pay, city pay volunteer page on the website where the openings for boards and commissions are. So, if you are in any groups that you think reach and more diverse, you know, share that page and get that page out there to people, yeah, check it every few months, or whatever. You know, we're coming up on the cycle now of re-ups for March, April is when, or end of March, I guess, is when a lot of terms end. And so, we will be having some openings, for sure. March and June, that's right.
I don't get the sense that the barrier is lack of awareness of opportunities to engage. I think that there are other barriers that are invisible to us because we are people of privilege.
Correct.
And so, one of the things we might try, and it's a little cart before the horse, because you have to get someone to the point of applying in the first place, but would be to put somewhere in the application process, a question about what barriers are there to you serving? They might be economic barriers, they might be childcare barriers, they might be scheduling barriers. Really, make it a very open-ended invitation for feedback. And I don't know, maybe it's even a survey you put up on the, that page that posts the volunteer opportunities, but really trying to start a conversation with people. The other thing I would mention is, and I don't know if this funding pot is still available, or how you would go about it, but I know that when the city of Portland did its Climate Action Plan back in the 90s, they just did it. And then, you know, a decade or so later, our thinking about these things had evolved, and they realized that they needed to do some work around inclusion and equity. They actually got funding, and they paid people to come. They paid people who were representative of people of color, people of different economic backgrounds, the people that you don't generally see sitting around tables like this. And that was how they made it possible to create an inclusive process. And that was a really transformative experience for a lot of the people who were involved in that, because they finally felt like they had an opportunity to really be at the table, literally at the table.
Awesome ideas. And things that we can put on here, I do wanna tell you, as much as I'm opening this up, it is not a council goal, which means that there is not a ton of money going towards this, there's not a ton of outside time. This is something that's important to me, and it's something that I am saying right now, I am looking at for what we do as city staff. If council wanted to, they have had discussions about this being a goal in the past, that would be a choice for them. But I do wanna also just limit expectations about what I'm doing. I am trying to make some small changes to make a better world. We would have to do a lot to actually right some wrongs. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna undermine that, or diminish that that's real.
So, I'll just add that, you know, as part of the update to the comprehensive plan, Goal One is public involvement, or whatever we ended up calling it, citizen engagement, or. So, I think that, you know, we put forward some ideas, the committee did, around how we can do that better and how we can be more inclusive. So, you know, I feel like that's an opportunity to look at, you know, how, how the NDAs are reaching out and how Planning Commission is trying to get people to attend meetings. You know, we look around and who attends Planning Commission meetings? It's really not a very diverse group that show up at 6:30 to the meetings. And so, what can we do to try to, you know, get more people to show up to meetings? So, I think that, you know, I think there's an opportunity there as we update the comp plan, and in particular, under Goal One, to look at strategies.
And I will disclose that the individuals I've been talking about around the work that I'm trying to do internally are from the Comp Plan Committee. And it started several months ago when we were working on Goal One, of just trying to figure out, what, what authority do I have within the administration, not within the city, but within the administration, to at least try and make things better. And I am more vocalizing my commitment to that in this meeting than I am saying I have a plan. But I am talking to those individuals who are on Comp Plan and who have been looking at this, at least a couple of them. If you know more that I am missing, feel free to call me, because my intention here is to, at least with this little piece, figure out how I can help. So, that's really all we had, and we're at time in two minutes. So, I do wanna just open it up. If there's anything else that you guys wanna talk about, please take the opportunity right now to do so, before we have to let the Planning Commission team go and a couple others. I really appreciate that, I appreciate you guys looking at this list, I appreciate the conversation. Vince, you and I'll have a conversation offline. Is there any other follow-up we needed?
No, I just wanna say thank you for taking time to come tonight and, and talk this through with us. It helps us a lot on the staff side, just route things correctly, I think. So, I really appreciate it.
I also, Scott just leaned over and reminded me, we have about half of the code of conduct signed. So, if you have individuals who are still working on that, leaving questions from Scott, he would encourage you to reach out to him if you have any questions or concerns.
Should we shame them?
Sure.
Shame is a really powerful term. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.